To order the school committee meeting for Monday, April 22nd, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being electronically recorded and we're going to start off first with community update, Mr. Keith Drucker.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Cortado. Here are our school sponsored events for April 22nd. On April 24th, the National Honor Society induction ceremony will be held at 7:00 PM in the beret auditorium. On April 26th, the senior prom will be held from 6:00 to 11:00 PM at Luciano's Lake Pearl. Sure to be a good time. On May 1st, the SAT exam will be held. For our middle schools at Brennan, on April 23rd, their school council meeting will be held at 3:30 PM. On April 24th, the grade five step challenge begins and it ends on May 3rd. On April 26th at Brennan, Term Three report cards will be distributed. On April 30th, the Title One Family Math and Literacy Night will be held at 6:30 PM in the library. Finally, on May 2nd and May 3rd at Brennan, the drama production of Alice in Wonderland will be held at 7:00 PM in the cafeteria. Over at Coelho on April 24th, the grade eight extravaganza will be held. And on May 3rd, the father-daughter dance will be held from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. And that's at Kareen's and that's sponsored by the PTO. Kareen's, maybe. At Wamsetta on May 2nd, the Elks Dinner will be held for outstanding students. For our elementary schools at Hyman Fine, on April 23rd, their school council meeting will be held at 5:00 PM. On April 24th at Hyman Fine, their PTO meeting will be held at 6:30 PM and that's in the library. And on April 27th, Hyman Fine's Outdoor Cleanup and Landscaping Family Day will be held from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. At Hill Roberts on April 23rd, their PTO meeting will be held at 7:00 PM in the library. On April 24th, their school council meeting will be held at 5:00 PM in the library. And at Hill Roberts on April 25th, the Grade One Bingo Night for Books will be held at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. At Studley on April 29th to May 3rd, the Scholastic Book Fair will be held. On May 2nd, their school council meeting will be held at 5:30 PM. And on May 2nd at Studley, their PTO meeting will be held at 6:30 PM. At Thatcher and ELC on April 23rd, the walking school bus begins in the morning, weather permitting, and they will meet at St. Joseph's Parking Lot at 8:15 AM. On April 24th, the Parent Math Support Night Division will be sponsored by The Math Coach from 6:30 to 7:15 PM in the teacher's cafeteria and that's for adults only. On April 24th, the Community Reading Day will be held. Also on April 24th at Thatcher and ELC, the Grade Four Step Challenge begins and it will end on May 3rd. And finally, at Willett on April 25th, the Science Night will be held from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And all students are welcome for that. Last but finally not least, the out of a school committee members of the public will be glad to hear that the varsity baseball team defeated King Philip this afternoon, 5 to 2.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Questions?
Well, any hits, Keith?
I did not have any.
That wasn't my question, but I was given a note on the way and one event that did not make it into the presentation. Tomorrow at Attleboro High School will be Blue and Yellow Day. Blue and yellow, obviously being the colors of the Boston Marathon. And all students in Attleboro High School community members will be encouraged to wear blue and yellow in commemoration of the events that took place in Boston last week. I know Mr. Rooney is here. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
We just, we hope to have voluntary donations from any students or staff members in the house offices and it will go to the one fund for Boston.
Thank you.
All set, Mr. Drucker?
That's all.
All right, perfect. Open forum. This is a time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you. Please know that we are interested in what you have to say, but we cannot respond without background information on your issue. Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address at this time, please. Okay, hearing and seeing none. Okay, open forum is closed. We'll go to the consent agenda. We have a vote to accept the donation in the amount of $2,300 from the Blue Fish Boosters Incorporated from the Rome Boulevard Race Proceeds to Attleboro High School Athletic Department for athletic fee scholarships due to financial hardships.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None. We have a vote to accept the donation of four Compaq CQ 662 laptops with a total estimate value of $800 from Mr. and Mrs. Crowley, owners of Infomotion Sports Technology/9450 Sports to Studley Elementary.
So move.
Discussion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None. Perfect. Okay, new business. Superintendent's recommendation. I'll let you take it from the up. The appointment for the assistant principal.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'd like Ms. Hickox to please come up to the table with Mr. Rooney. And I'd like Mr. Rooney to begin recognizing the members of the screening committee who worked very diligently and many of whom are here today in terms of working with, basically coming up with three finalist candidates. And the pool was extensive and those three finalists were interviewed by myself and Mr. Rooney. I've known Jean Hickox since I entered here and I'm proud to say that each year I work on building a bench. That's my quote, not to talk about baseball, but it is. And about three years ago, I think it was three years ago, I asked Jean to come meet with me, as I did with about 20 other people, to have a discussion about what she would see herself doing in five years. And at that time, I remember, she wasn't really interested in administration, but was doing some wonderful things as a language teacher, which she has been, as well as then she moved herself to become a dean of some very challenging students and had great relationships with kids. And then stepped up to the plate in becoming the testing coordinator in addition to dean work at the high school, which as you can imagine is quite extensive. That season never ends. There's retests and not only MCAS, but all the type of testing that has to go on. And under Mr. Sawyer's tutelage, we never had a question about administration and under Ms. Hickox's tutelage, we haven't had a question about that, as you could imagine. I was delighted three years ago when Jean said that she was considering moving toward administration. And she is a certified administrator. And when this vacancy came about, I was pleased to see that she had applied. Jean represents what I feel is the passion about Attleboro High School. She is deeply committed, deeply committed to this school and wants to be here to make it better. And that's called an intense will that always couples itself with a great deal of skill. So we're very happy to, I'm very happy to appoint her tonight as the assistant principal at Attleboro High School. And I'd love to hear from Mr. Rooney and herself, as well as if you can introduce the screening committee that Mr. Rooney did share and worked very diligently with.
Well, first of all, I would also just like to interject that we really appreciate the efforts that Mrs. York, Ms. Hickox's predecessor, has put into the position. A lot of the great things that have taken place at Attleboro High School in the last four years prior to my arrival were based on a very strong administrative team. Mr. Newman, Mr. Sawyer, and Mrs. York was a vital part of that. And we wish her well. She hasn't been able to publicly announce what her next venture is, but we do wish her the best. The screening committee that we put together for this position was one that we wanted to be sure represented virtually every constituency in the veritable melting pot that is Attleboro High School. And so, and I'm just going to go around the room and in no particular order. Marissa McCarthy was on the screening committee. We have Max Lancaster, who is our student representative. He followed admirably in the footsteps of Mr. Drucker, who was the student representative on my screening committee. Behind Max is Mr. Brian Hodges, who is an excellent social studies teacher. Mr. Doug Heel, who is one of our deans and also has served as student services coordinator at the high school. Ms. Julie Little, who is one of our guidance counselors. Ms. Muffy Bosch, who represented the clerical staff. Ms. Lucy Andrade, who is one of our parents and has also been very vital in other schools within the district. Lori Scales, who not only is a past parent, is a current parent and also is one of the officers of AICPAC. So make sure that I didn't leave anybody. I got everybody. Okay. As far as, you know, my perspective on Jean taking this position, as I said just a few minutes ago, there were so many wonderful things that took place at Attleboro High School. I think the tide turned with Dr. Durkin's installation as superintendent. But then, when Mr. Newman became principal a few years ago, the upswing continued at an even greater pace. And as we navigated the process, to be able to find somebody who had been a part of that diligence, that passion to turn Attleboro High School into the place to be, ended up becoming a very important part. And I will have to say that Jean hit a home run with the screening committee. And when Dr. Durkin and I put her through the paces of several hypothetical, and they weren't truly hypothetical, but a lot of hypothetical questions, she handled those flawlessly. And as Dr. Durkin said, Jean has a fabulous work ethic. I mean, she does not punch a clock by any stretch of the imagination. And I feel, I feel very good about her completing our administrative team at the high school.
Wow. Those are some very, very kind words, all of you. I thanked Dr. Durkin for the opportunity. Certainly this committee, they put me at ease so I could be myself. I'm humbled and I'm honored. I've been in Attleboro for 16 of my 18 years in education. It is certainly my professional home. I believe in this town. I believe in that high school. What I can promise you is I will do my best every day and give you 110% and I really look forward to it, working with you, the new superintendent, and Attleboro's finest. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to presentation from Geogenics. Phil Stone, commercial manager. Mr. Rose, do you want to?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mrs. Chair. This is the second of two presentations which Phil Stone and Susan Brody will provide. They gave a presentation to the finance committee approximately a month ago. And the purpose of the presentation tonight is to pretty much for them to duplicate their presentation to the finance committee, but to give it to the full school committee. And the presentation is primarily about one item, and that is, what about the idea of installing solar panels on the roof of the Hill Roberts Elementary School, the Hyman Fine Elementary School, and Attleboro High School? And first conversation with Phil and the folks at Geogenics and then on with the Hudson Solar probably started maybe back in July or August. And we've had some, some good communication. Susan and Phil, thank you very much for coming. Sir, I'm sorry, I don't know your first name.
Garof.
Garof, thank you very much for coming up from New Jersey this evening for the presentation. And without any further ado, I'll turn it over to, to the group.
Garof, why don't you introduce? I'm Garof Neik. I'm one of the principals of Geogenics. We've been focused on solar for the last 10 years. And we're happy to be here today to help answer any questions that you might have about the proposal that, you know, Phil and Susan had talked to you guys about.
Thank you. We, we prepared a package that was actually mailed ahead of time about a week and a half ago. It consists of a PowerPoint and an Excel spreadsheet. The PowerPoint gives you some background onto the PPAs, background in Geogenics, background in Hudson, and the offering. The Excel sheet shows the financial potential of the project. What phase would you feel comfortable in beginning with?
I would like you to pretend, Phil, that no one in this room has ever heard anything about solar power, but I'd like you to try to keep the presentation to 15 minutes.
That sounds good.
Thank you. They do have the handout.
Mr. Rose, yield any quickly? I like that.
Well, I think we can, we can do a quick run through on the presentation in about 10 minutes. Does everyone have one of these? Great. Okay. I'm going to skip through a lot of the fluff part of this. We'll go right to the more important things. But the overview of the team structure is important to understand. The Hudson Solar Energy Group is going to be the finance and owner of the project. This is going to be a completely turnkey project that's going to be financed by Hudson Solar. Geogenics will use its expertise to help manage and install the project. The thing to keep in mind is that Hudson Solar will be your long-term partner. Susan is the operational director of Hudson Solar and she can answer any questions concerning the Hudson Solar. Garof or myself can help with the Geogenics questions. Let's move on to the second thing. The, the important things to understand is that, that we can go through this very quickly, is that Hudson Solar has invested well over $100 million, mostly with schools. And they have a super list of school references which we've, we can furnish to you. Some of them are listed in here and any of which you can call. Geogenics has a background. We've done over 1,000 installations in both commercial and residential. So we have a good combination in the team. This is, this goes on. Hudson Energy, Susan, if you want to give a quick rundown on Hudson Energy?
Sure. Sure. So I work for a company called Hudson Energy Solar Corporation, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Just Energy Group, which is headquartered in Toronto and has many offices throughout the United States, throughout North America. The primary business of Just Energy is to sell gas and electric on a retail level. And in 2010, they put together our group, the solar group, to invest in solar energy, solar energy production, what? Assets. So that we can add selling solar electricity to our portfolio. And our first installation was actually in February of 2010 where we installed a small residential project. And we proceeded very quickly by that summer to install our first school system in New Jersey. And in the past two and a half years, we have invested about $140 million in solar in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Massachusetts. I would say about 70% of the investments have been on schools, private and public schools. And at this point, the portfolio is definitely weighted to New Jersey, but we're looking to equalize that and have an equal, equal solar investment in Massachusetts. We do have currently four solar projects. Two of them are fully operational in Massachusetts. Two of them will be complete by June of this year. And we've got about, I think, four other projects which are in the contract phase in Massachusetts. So we're looking to balance our portfolio and have, hopefully by the end of 2014, an equal, equalized portfolio with, with substantial investment in Massachusetts. We look at the Attleboro Board of Education as an excellent partner for Hudson Energy Solar. We are looking for these types of partners to work with for the long term. We're an energy company who will be here as your partner for 15 years. We're not looking to invest in the asset and sell it. We're in the business of selling electricity and we'll, we're looking forward to that opportunity.
Oh, question?
Question?
Of the two that you have in Massachusetts and the two that are in the works, are any of those on public school buildings right now?
No, those four are not there on supermarkets.
Okay. Do you have any that are in the works on public school buildings or would this be the first?
Yes, and the contracts that we're negotiating right now are all with schools.
Are all with schools?
Yes.
Garof, do you want to give a quick rundown of highlights at Geogenics?
Sure. So, you know, Geogenics has been around about 12 years. We've been focused on solar electric systems for the last 10 of those. We are a New Jersey headquartered company and been doing business in New Jersey and Pennsylvania predominantly, which have been, you know, the large markets as far as policy has been concerned to promote solar. You know, Massachusetts essentially has opened up as a market for both commercial and public installations of solar electric systems essentially for the last couple of years. And we've been, you know, developing projects in Massachusetts since the middle of last year. We're working very closely with, you know, with Hudson Solar as our financial partner and, you know, looking at schools, municipalities, and some corporations where it makes sense to invest in this long-term energy asset. So as a company, we've, you know, installed, as Phil said, you know, close to 1,000 systems. You know, our total portfolio is about 20 megawatts. So that would, that would mean, you know, Attleboro is about a one and a half to a two-megawatt solar opportunity in terms of size over the three buildings that they're looking at. And the reason it kind of makes sense, and Phil's going to go into the, you know, the economic presentation, is schools essentially are buildings that once you invest in the infrastructure of the school and you know, you put in new roofs, the school building is going to like be there for a long time. So from, you know, from the aspect that it's going to be, you know, something that's going to keep consuming electricity. And as we know, in, in working in deregulated markets, the cost of electricity has been creeping up slowly but surely, you know, on us over, you know, over a period of years. So what, by entering into this, what's called a power purchase agreement with, with Hudson Solar, what the school is doing is, it's basically walking into what its electric rates will be for the next 15 years, you know, once it's, once it adopts this solar solution. And I think the, there is an Excel sheet that has been distributed to the financial committee and a very simple numbers presentation that you guys have as a part of the packet that Phil will try and elaborate on as to, you know, what it means in terms of savings in year one and over the 15-year period that you enter into this energy purchase contract through the solar asset on your roof.
So just to recap, a power purchase agreement, or PPAs, is a 15-year energy contract. At this point, you're not buying a solar system or owning a solar system. A third-party company, which is Hudson Solar, will build, ensure, and maintain the system for the next 15 years. After 15 years, the system reverts to the school. And from year 15 to probably at least 30 or 35, there is a 25-year manufacturer's performance warranty on the panel, but the expected life expectancy is 30 to 35 years, possibly longer. All of the energy that comes from the system will go to the school at no cost. So it's, it's an exceptional opportunity. It's a major investment. A project this size, Hudson Solar is prepared to invest probably somewhere in the area of $6 million to $7 million for this size solar system. So it's a very, very large capital improvement to the, to the facility as well, which basically reverts to the facility at year 15. And again, this is turnkey. There's absolutely zero cost to the schools. Everything from the permitting, the procurement, the acquisition, the, the entire installation, and then the final reviews are all paid for by Hudson Solar. So, and we provide a project manager. So luckily, Tom and the team won't have too many things. This will not take up a lot of their time because we do everything and basically CC the school and give them all copies of our paperwork, but we manage the project from day one and make sure that it doesn't take up a lot of your bandwidth. The, the best way to look at this would be to take a quick look at this Excel spreadsheet. Now, there are a couple of things here that are, they're only guesses. If you look at the middle, the middle column, what isn't a guess, well, actually, I should say what's an estimate at this point based on the pictometry and the types of abilities we have to judge solar systems now through satellites and software, we're looking at a system size at approximately 1.9 kilowatt, which is a large system size for school. We are estimating that this year utility rate will be around 15 cents. As of last year, it was in the 14.3 or 14.4 cents. The utility rate and inflation is something we can't predict. This, we've, we sent this Excel chart to everyone and anyone who asked for it. You can change that number to 3%, 4%, 6%, 7%. The last two years, utility inflation rates have flatlined. However, for the decade prior to that, it's gone up exponentially, double digits every year. So there's a million factors that determine why energy costs go up. We, we basically use 5% that over the last 12 years is a conservative number. Over the last two years, it may be considered high, but again, we, we can't predict. But that number can be changed to anything that you want. But for the purposes of discussion, we left the utility rate of inflation at 5%. The solar starting rate, which Susan said Tom negotiated extremely well, matter of fact, is extremely low. The system's going to start you at under nine cents, 8.9 cents per kilowatt hour, which is a substantial savings from your existing cost. And the next line, will, there'll be a fixed 2% escalator, which means regardless of what happens to the grid, if, if electricity goes up 10% or 15%, for the next 15 years, you're locked in at a maximum of 2% per year as an annual escalator, starting from 8.9 cents per kilowatt hour. Your annual load is just under 3 megawatts currently, so this will, this will basically produce about 74% of your energy. Now, if you look at the, at the year chart right beneath it, the real number that's super important at this point is the cumulative savings. You'll see in the first year, it starts out at 133,000 and then if we want to jump to year five, you'll be saving over 792,000. And this is assuming that electric utility rates do go up and assuming that at 5%. If they go up higher, the savings obviously would be more. If they go up less, the savings would be less. So that's something we really just can't predict. But based on the last 12 years, again, 5% is fairly conservative. If you look at year 10, the savings are close to $2 million. At year 15, which is the last year that you'll be paying Hudson Solar for the use of the energy, you're still saving three, over three and a half million dollars. Now, what you'll see between year 15 and 20, the first five years, your actual cumulative savings will almost double, actually more than double, over the next five years that you saved over the first 15 because you're no longer paying for the electricity. You'll be saving at year 20, over $7 million. And at year 25, the Excel chart, it was over $10 million. You'll probably be somewhere around $12 million. And all of this is for zero investment at zero cost. There is, and again, all insurance, all maintenance is paid for by Hudson Solar for the first 15 years. From year 15, when you take over the array, that will, that basically turn to the, to the school. Maintenance on solar systems are fairly minimal. They, these things, as soon as they get working, we're not doing any kind of exotic things here. There's no tracking, there's no moving parts, there's less potential problems with that kind of scenario. And the technology, again, has a 25-year manufacturer's warranty on the panels, which is the most expensive part of the, of the whole installation. Do you have any questions?
One thing I'd like to just kind of add. So in year one, the net savings is 133,000 right away. Even if the inflation rates were the same, both two for you, the utility rate and the solar rate, still you could assume kind of safely that we're going to be starting saving 133,000 a year.
Yes, because you're starting at 8.9 cents versus the 15.
So that's kind of, I mean, almost like a minimal number. But I think right now would actually be a good point made for Tom to explain the work he does. This other sheet that Tom attached to it, because I think that goes hand in hand with the numbers again here. If you don't mind.
No, that's fine. Tom, are you ready to do that now? Is that?
Yes. Yes. Thanks very much, Ken. The sheet, first of all, does everybody have the sheet in front of them? It's the, the sheet that showed the...
A little tiny print.
Yep.
Thank you. What I simply did with that sheet was I took the utility bills that we've received so far this fiscal year and then applied approximately a 75% factor indicating that if we were able to use 75% of that electricity, we were able to switch it from National Grid and Direct Energy. And you should probably know, National Grid is our distributor and Direct Energy is our supplier. If we were to be able to replace those two with solar energy and only purchase 25% from National Grid and Direct Energy, that's, that's pretty much what the savings would be across the board. And that was a, it was a good request that Ken had made a couple of months ago. And the point that we're trying to make was, does it make financial sense for us to go through with this project? Over and above what, what Susan and what Garv and what, and what Phil have said, and the answer is yes. I mean, from a numbers standpoint, there's no question that it makes sense primarily for one reason. 75% of the electricity that we would need at Bill Roberts, Hyman Fine, and the Houghton Albert High School, we would be able to provide, we would be able to receive from the solar panels, and we would only have to go out and actually purchase 25% through National Grid and Direct Energy. So, that's pretty much the, the summary of that, of that spreadsheet. And I just want to try to explain that it makes, it makes financial sense. Yes, Ken?
Yeah, I think the, the sheet was fantastic what Tom paid, used real numbers. And basically, when it came down for a three-month period, he saw savings of almost 54,000. Take that over four quarters, it's 200,000. The funny part is, our analyst is actually giving better numbers than the salespeople. He's saying we're going to save more than the people who are proposing this too. So, I think that says a lot financially. Financially, I can't see any reason that this is a losing situation.
And if I might just add a point, if you look at it, your solar PPA rate in year 15 will be fixed at 11.7 cents per kilowatt hour. And so, even if electricity rates from National Grid and from Direct Energy flatline for the next 15 years and stayed at 15 cents per kilowatt hour, you'd still be saving essentially, you know, a good 25% of your energy cost 15 years from now. So, we, we all know that, you know, that's an highly impossible scenario because even if you factor in inflation at two and a half percent, you know, electricity rates at least have to go up by that much each year. Now, you know, if you look at the Northeast and you, and you look at real averages, since deregulation has set in, each of the states, from Massachusetts all the way down to Maryland, basically, have been seeing somewhere between, you know, 6% to 8% annualized rate of increases when it comes to electric rates, except for the last two years where mainly because of a reduce, reduction in, in demand of electricity, electricity rates, and the cost of natural gas basically stabilizing and falling a little bit, electricity rates have essentially, you know, flatlined or maybe dropped a little bit. But other than that, if you like, look at the real scenario, and as, you know, the regional economy picks up again and demand increases, electric rates are basically going to start taking back up slowly but surely. So, even, even at year 15, the, the solar PPA rate that's been, that you're locking in through your contract is going to be a substantial savings from what you're paying today.
And, and keep in mind that all of the contracts that you negotiate with a Direct Energy or whatever the National Grid gives you are subject to whatever their costs are. So, when their costs go up, they immediately refer them to you. You don't get any kind of long-term agreement from any of these third-party suppliers or from your third-party energy suppliers. And if they do give you, say, a two-year agreement or three-year agreement, it's, there's a little line in the bottom that says if their costs go up, because if their cost of energy go up, they have to pass the, the cost increase on to you. So, even though there can be a savings with these third-party companies, you're still subject to their cost increases. With solar, there is no cost increase that can affect the school's rate. You know, Middle East wars, fracking becoming environmentally a problem, or some of the other things that could be a, a complete game changer. Again, it doesn't affect your solar rate where from a third-party supplier, it could, it could really increase the rates, you know?
On the solar panels, you say that you install them, you maintain them. Are those solar panels something you screw into the roof? Is it, is that how you, how do you?
There are no penetrations with this type of system. This is a ballasted system, and there's actually a slip cover that's placed between the actual metal racking, which the panels lie on, and the roof, so that the actual racking doesn't even touch the roof. So, there isn't any penetrations on the roof. Everything is wind ballasted, it has to be rated for 125 miles an hour. And even in the last storm in New Jersey, not one of our, of our systems blew off with the last hurricane.
And how old can a, when you look at it, how old can a roof be to install these on?
Well, we recommend under six years of age, six to seven years old or less. But it really depends on the warranty that's on the roof. Some roofs are, are better roofs, they're thicker material, they're better installed. So, we look to have 15 years or more of life or warranty on the roof. Sometimes roofing systems can get a 20- or 25-year warranty, so potentially a seven or eight-year roof would be fine. If it's a, an inferior roof that only has a 10-year guarantee or a 15-year guarantee and it's already halfway through its warranty, then, you know, we recommend that either it's re-roofed or recoded, or something be done to extend the roof panels. But one of the pluses of putting a solar system on a roof, and this comes from roofers, not from solar people, is that it's been documented to extend the life of the roof because you're covering the roof from the UV rays, which is really the most detrimental part of why roofs decay. So, it's like putting a carport on most of the roof. So, it actually extends the life of your roof. And in some cases, people have seen that it actually lowers the air conditioning load because, again, the roof is at a lower temperature because of the panels sheltering the roof. So, there are some additional pluses to that, how panels can interact with roofs on a positive level.
And you clean the, the panels because that's part of the maintenance cleaning?
Well, we would, well, the, the good news is that most of these manufacturers, including this one, don't claim that the cleaning is not necessary. These are all on a tilt, generally nine to 11 degrees. And the tilt with any kind of rain and the wind are enough to keep the panels clean. However, at least once a year and possibly more because we monitor the system along with whoever's designated in the school to do so, if there's any anomalous patterns of dirt will come up, clean them. It's, it's really a lot simpler. Most of the time, you fill up big buckets with Rain-X and, and basically mops, and you just take over anything. I mean, occasionally, we've seen panels that birds, like seagulls, have targeted. So, you know, but that's kind of rare, but sometimes they've done it. In one instance, we had seagulls that were dropping big shells on the panels in order to break them on the roofs. So, they're using the panels like a bullseye. So, but again, that only happened once and, you know, you had to clean up the shells.
It was right on the beach, it was at...
It was right on the beach, too. So, but they go up high and they actually drop them so they can break them and then eat the, I mean, it's really smart, but not so great for solar panels. But it's only happened once out of the hundreds of thousands of installations that we know of. So, it's...
I mean, you know, the good, the good thing with, with solar electric systems versus, you know, wind generators is because there are no moving parts, essentially, the maintenance is very minimal. And especially when you're mounting the panels at a tilt of 10 degrees, as long as you're in, you're in an area which gets, you know, rain on a periodic basis, these panels are pretty much self-cleaning. And since the systems are being monitored, there is a maintenance plan in place where, you know, if you see, we, we are constantly looking at reports on a weekly basis to see how each and every system pretty much has, has performed, you know, based on what it's predicted to do. And if we see some anomaly as, as Phil said, it means you've got to get out there and proactively see what's going on. And, and the finance company only gets the return on investment if these things are actually producing. So, it's in their best interest to make sure that, you know, they're producing to what they're expecting to do, so.
And, and we actually have a team that monitors systems on a daily basis. Every day, we have production monitoring going on in all of our systems. And if any system is not performing at its targeted level, we would get an alert and we would send somebody out to, you know, to see what the problem is with the system. And at the same time, we do have O and M contracts, which you would get a copy of so that you'd know who the O and M provider was. And that maintenance provider would most likely be required by us to clean the, to clean the panels on an annual basis, just because that's our standard protocol for all of our projects. Either, either an annual basis or semi-annual basis, depending on the climate and the location of the actual system. These systems would probably be on an annual basis. But they'd certainly be...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but they'd certainly be here on a, a regular basis to check wiring and any, any, any issues that, you know, that would be required by maintenance protocol.
So, at the end of 15 years, if, if we went ahead with the contract, it's a 15-year contract, what does Admiral Public Schools, what do we own? Do we own the panels? Do we buy them from you? Like, what happens at the end of the contract?
So, the way, the way that the contract is written is, it's written in, in an appropriate fashion so that we would be, and, and carefully so, so that we would be clearly the tax owner. Because as you all know, one of the, one of the financial requirements to make a project like this work are the tax benefits to us for owning the project. And in order to be the tax owners, it has to be clear that we are not leasing you the system, but that we own the system, you're buying the electricity. And if we were to write into the contract that you will buy the system in 15 years from now at $5 or any dollar amount, it would be considered that we sold you the system today and you leased it to us, and, and we leased it to you for 15 years and we already negotiated the sale price. So, it cannot, the, the contract will not be written in that way. The contract will be written that in 15 years, you will have the opportunity to buy the system from us at the fair market value of the system. And the fair market value is defined as the dollar amount that a willing buyer would pay a willing seller for that system. Now, willing buyer and a willing seller, in the history that I know of, have not traded 15-year-old solar systems for more than $1. So, it's our intent to give you the solar system after 15 years, and we have to negotiate that appropriately today so that we are the owners of the system. But we believe that it will trade at a dollar at the end of term.
So, we own the panels pretty much?
So, you'll own the entire system. We will basically, you'll own the system, you'll own the monitoring equipment, you'll own...
And then we would contract, again, the, the solar energy, pretty, same thing?
You wouldn't because what would happen is the solar system would be producing electricity on your roof and feeding your, your, your meters, and you would just be getting the electricity for free. You wouldn't have to pay any bill on it because you owned the system. So, the only thing that you would contemplate at that point and probably discuss with, you know, some professionals like Phil and Garv, would be whether you'd like to, you know, hire your own maintenance contractor or whether you would like to just maintain it on an as-need basis. That would be determined by you in 15 years. And we've met with a lot of different owners of solar systems that have opted in either direction. You know, it said, the systems require so, you know, such a low level of maintenance, we will just have somebody on in our rolodex that we will call if we have a problem. And then we have others that just say, I'd rather pay, you know, $150 a year and know that I've got someone who's, it's, it's, you know, the same kind of decision you'd make about any other kind of maintenance of, of equipment. So, that would be your only expense at that point.
And panels last for how long? Now, I, I mean, I'm thinking after 15 years, those are the original panels.
The panels themselves are warranted for 25 years.
25.
And I think the expectancy that I would suggest would be 30 years, even though I've heard other people in the industry saying 35 years or 40 years, I, I would fully expect the system to perform for 30, 30-plus years.
Yes, Mr. Rose?
Just one question. How long do they take to construct on the roof?
So, in terms of, in terms of, you know, it depends upon, we'll be working with facilities directly to coordinate the three different locations. But say you take like equal sizes over, over the three locations, so like 600 kilowatts, you're looking at a month at the most, at the most, basically. Between three weeks and, and four weeks.
Okay, thank you. And no interruption too, all right? There'd be no interruption if you had to do it during school time?
No, no, we would stage that with your facilities people so that any equipment or trucks would not be anywhere near the, the children. You know, we would take whatever spaces behind or on the sides of the building that wouldn't interfere with anyone.
I mean, the staging happens such that, you know, we, we're coming, we'll probably come in on a Sunday, you know, and we'll basically lift all the equipment and then place it on the roof. And then, you know, the, the installers will be coming in early in the morning before the school starts and, you know, getting in, and that they leave at about, you know, four, between four and five in the evening. So, people will be normally working on the roof with most of their equipment, you know, already on the roof, basically.
A noise level in installing it? Is there any interruption for, for school?
I mean, you know, they might be using a few power drills.
Okay. I mean, we kept this high school open without problems putting on a new roof. So, you know, I mean, obviously it's...
So, definitely it's going to be less than what...
Right.
Because most of these things, you're not really, you're just, with ballasted systems, you're just basically, you know, putting things on. So, you're not constructing anything on the roof, basically. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose, I just want to mention...
Yes?
The Hyman Fine Hill Roberts and the High School. If this project goes through and it's approved by the committee...
Yes.
I definitely would like some kind of building inspection reported to the committee stating that our roofs are able to hold that type of...
Sure.
...material and, and everything being worked up on the roofs. I would just want confirmation on that with the construction and that, if you don't mind.
Good idea.
Okay, so, fully, Tom?
Oh.
Fully move on. So, what, what are our next steps? Like, if we're interested in going forward with this, knowing that there may be questions about taxes and there's maybe a question about roof warranties. But overall, I, I mean, I would be ready to put a motion out there to move on. Would you suggest that we wait?
I suggest that we wait. The reason I was here is because I was just going to go out and say thank you to the folks. I normally would sit over my chair, so I don't want you to think I'm trying to play hide and go seek on you. The answer is I would wait. I, I, I think that we need to do our due diligence. It's already been done, but I think we want to reassure certain individuals who might be a little bit nervous about work that's been done on the repair of some roofs, MSBA dollars and so on, and let's make sure that everything is, is good to go. And that's exactly what we're going to do, is what we're looking into right now. Geogenics is involved, Hudson Solar's involved. The mayor has asked for a certification from an architect indicating that if we go ahead and we implement this system, that there's not going to be any, any problems with the warranty that we have on the repair work that's been done, that we can get done. And so, that process is going to take a few weeks, but my recommendation is let's make sure that everyone's on board, all the documentation is straight, inspections have been completed and so on, and so that we're, and so that we, in no shape or form do we give the impression that we're trying to kind of rush this, not rush, but move the thing along perhaps a little bit quicker than other people would like. So, I'd recommend we, we lay low for now and either at the late May meeting or the early June meeting, at that point, with all documentation on board, everyone in agreement, then at that point, we make, we, we, we put it on the agenda for a vote, but I would recommend we wait until that point.
Yeah. Would it be possible to put on the next finance agenda just maybe an update?
Absolutely.
Update the finance...
Absolutely. We've got a, we've got a meeting on the 15th of May, and then we, as you know, we've got a school committee meeting on the 20th of May. And, and it's very, very possible that for that May 20th meeting, that all that documentation is going to be from Geogenics and from the architect and, and everything, who are all going to be, that all the Ts will have been crossed and all the Is will have been dotted. What I can tell you is this, the preparatory work that needed to get done, preliminary preparatory work needed to get done, has... preparatory work needed to get done, has been done. We wouldn't have been here tonight giving that presentation if in fact, we didn't think this was a legitimate situation, a legitimate request. It's, it's a terrific request and it makes perfect sense, but I, I think that we should ball the, make sure that all the appropriate paperwork's in order and so that all the assurances have been made before we, we ask for a formal vote.
Yeah, this would be good to get in before the summer so they could work on some...
Totally agree.
Lot of the track being built.
Correct.
Solar panels going on, a pool being worked on, it'll be...
Correct.
Be fun.
Mr. Rose, have you had any contacts with either school, well, just start with the school district, or anybody that you know that has had this done or has ventured into this? No? Okay.
Frankly, they want to use Attleboro as their, as their poster child. They're trying to use Attleboro, understandably so, they want to use Attleboro as their gateway into Massachusetts. And that's why, when they initially came out, so the answer to your question, Mrs. Chair, is no. Because there aren't that many different school districts in the area in Massachusetts that have actually installed the solar panels yet, at least not through this particular company. They came out here and they initially looked at Attleboro High School and they were kind of blown away by Attleboro High School, and they thought that it was a perfect example. Then there was, at that point, where they asked to take a look at the other eight schools. And when they looked at Hill Roberts and then looked at Hyman Fine, they said, these are ideal candidates. And so it was at that point where they wanted to piggyback onto the Attleboro High School task and add two more schools, which would give us even more savings and give them even greater bang for their buck. But that, that's a little bit of the background.
Okay, great.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
She, she more or less asked the question. I, I just, I just think it would be a good idea for us to get references from...
Agreed.
Previous clients, probably down in New Jersey, particularly schools ideally. Thank you.
Great, thank you. FY14 preliminary budget update, Superintendent Durkin, Mr. Dave Sawyer, and Mr. Tom Rose.
Essentially, what we have done, Mr. Rose in particular, we have moved the information that last year was, last week was, two weeks ago was presented, to be able to include that in the budget. And we're going to, if, if you don't mind, go through the same presentation, because there have been changes on slides. And I will go through relatively quickly the ones that have not changed, but obviously the ones that have bear discussion. So we know what our vision is, where we are going in terms of excellence for our students, and particularly the term powerful learning will gain new meaning as we move into far more rigorous standards, as well as far more rigorous assessment tools to be able to address those standards, and working together to be able to achieve achievement for every child. Our budget priorities remain the same, the shifts in enrollment, the infrastructure needs to support instructional technology, which we have some added information about tonight and where we may need, need to look at where that's going to be placed in the budget. And of course, we also know that the healthcare and contractual salary obligations that we have. I'm going to have Tom go over this, which will demonstrate what is different from the last time in terms of this.
Great, thank you, Dr. Durkin. There's just really one eye, one entry, and that entry is this, $471,000. If you take, if you remember two weeks ago when we met, the decision that was made was this. You know, these additional funding priorities, they all look pretty good, and they total $500,000 for the infrastructure upgrade, but these other requests total $471,000, and they all seem very, very valid. So what we want, we being the school committee, what we want you to do, Attleboro School Department, is we want you to plug that $471,000, put it in the regular budget. So the only two numbers that have changed on that FY14 column between tonight and two weeks ago is the net school spending budget is now $63,517,402, meaning that's the amount of money that we would like the city to give us for education, or everything other than transportation. The transportation number may stay the same, and so our total school budget is $66,607,49. And the only change is a bump up of $471,000 to the net school spending budget sheet. And I kept, and you might have them in front of you as well, but if we were to take a look at our eight April sheet, the number was $471,000 less. So that's the only change, FY13 column naturally stayed the same, and FY12 column stayed the same.
I just want to make sure regarding transportation.
Yes.
Regarding middle schools, things like that.
Yes.
That's in there, we're covered, we're looking forward. I know we were short there a little bit there.
The answer, thank you very much, Mrs. Chair. The answer is yes. In fact, I, we have some, we're closely with the Attleboro School, with the Transportation Office. And pretty much what I said was this, we need to make sure that we have a line item in our budget for FY14 that's going to cover this and this and this and this and this. And that's the number we have to drive to. We cannot, we don't want to change that $3,8347 figure. And the folks in the Transportation Department, they crunched the numbers, they came up with a plan, they said, yes, we think that number can work. And included in that number are the dollars that we want and that we need for late buses.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
This has not changed since last time. These are the increases that are projected contractually at a, a total of 1.7 million. This has not changed also. Fortunately, the health benefits is being documented in an 8% increase, and that, as we discussed, is the outside amount. Given that we have open enrollment now, we're hoping it will be lower, but again, let's see, the highest amount we're anticipating. The special ed tuition has remained the same, and we discussed last time that the tuitions are somewhat lower for the upcoming year because we do anticipate a number of students who are graduating at the year of age 22. We're no longer responsible for that, so that's why that decline is there. And in the staffing pieces, you will note that what we have here is what was on the additional priorities at the last slide have now been incorporated, and I, and we'd like to go through these. I'm going to defer, Mr. Sawyer, would you mind doing this slide?
Sure.
Thank you.
We have 4.5 FTEs for elementary. That would be an elementary teacher at, the, the original one that was Hyman Fine, and then we would be, also be adding one for Roberts, Willett, and Studley. And then there's a .5 team chair in there as well. And we have 2, .5 FTEs for middle school, and that's two for Coelho. They need an extra team in grade six. And then there's the .5 for Brennan to cover a need in the integrated arts. We also have 2.0 at Attleboro High School, that's a 1.0 science teacher, a .3 to cover a position that's coming off of a grant, and then .7 for the American Sign Language program. We have 1.8 CTE, that's early education for children. An increase from .7 to point, to 1.0 for automotive, and a .5 for computer service, computer services. And then the 1.0 district-wide is the science, the K-12 is the science coordinator position.
The district-wide science coordinator. And I know, but that seems like a huge, huge burden with, for one coordinator throughout the district for a science...
To give you a point of reference, you know, we have one in math and one in literacy.
Throughout the district?
Yes.
And that's K through 12?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, that's K through eight.
K through eight?
Yes.
Nothing at the high school with...
We intersect with that, but because there are department heads at the high school, obviously they take on the role of that coordinating function. However, what we've done the last few years is make sure we're aligned. So people at the elementary and middle, and Mr. Sawyer, having come from the high school, has done a great deal of work this year to make sure that what we're doing at K-8 is very much aligned with high school and the reverse. But I'm not advocating for less than a 1.0. We have not had a science coordinator, and, and this position, I think you know...
Oh, I, no, I think it's good. I'm just kind of concerned that it's...
Do you want to...
Yeah, I mean, it's a starting...
And it's something new, it's, so I was just...
It's a starting place. As we heard in the presentation from the science teachers who've been working on this, I mean, their hope was that we would move towards a, a coaching system like we have in math and English. And we'd love to do that, but, you know, to take on, especially considering some of the other needs, you know, a whole cadre of people, I just, I don't think it's realistic. If we could get the coordinator in, though, this person could lead, the PD could also help us with the curriculum development and, and really help to get us on the right track.
All right, I'm just, yeah.
The other thing I would, I'm going to take a risk in stating this, not having, I won't be, I won't be leading this, but a, a recommendation, is as we started with the math and literacy coordinator, that eventually became half-time coaches that we shared between schools, and then eventually we moved to full-time coaches. I would hope, since science is going to become a critical part of MCAS, as well as being evaluated for English, Language, Arts, and Math, is that you may want to consider moving to that model for a, you know, a half-time coach and eventually to a full-time coach, so teachers really do get the support they need for science. We also learned this week that the new math, uh, science standards are out, and we showed them at the, the curriculum meeting, and they're, they're very, very, very rigorous and very intensive.
Oh, I know.
And in addition, this person at the district-wide level would need to work very closely with the science chairperson at the high school. And that science department, as you, you know, we are expanding that for an additional teacher that's needed in the science department. But clearly, to be able to make this work, kids have to be science proficient from K through 12, and those alignments have to happen. And that's what we're doing, I think, well in literacy and math, particularly in math as the standards change, the same thing's going to have to be happening for science.
So your math and ELO, ELA coach, do you still have a coordinator?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
And then you have your coaches?
Yes. And they are responsible. The coordinator, as, as Jay Vixen works very hard with the coaches to make sure we're all on the same page across schools. So the coordinator here would begin that work and eventually hopefully move toward more support at the school level.
All right. But my concern wasn't just not having that one, my concern was to making sure there was enough there, because that's a big, you know, job and duty with just a coordinator and no coaches and having someone from K through eight and then working with the high school. So that was only my concern, making sure that we're good there.
I was just going to add that, I mean, this gets bumped up on the priority list because the assessments are changing and science is being evaluated, or potentially being evaluated differently. All that's very true. Given the budgetary limitations, sometimes that's what it takes to move something up on the priority list. But the underlying point here is that students need to learn science.
Absolutely.
And whether it's on the MCAS or not, or whether it's on the park exam or not, like, the people graduating from Attleboro High School have to have a solid foundation in science, and that's why the curriculum needs to be streamlined throughout the K through 12, you know, district. So I just, I know that's underlying when we talk about these things and why it's becoming increasingly relevant, but I don't think, I just want to make sure that we never get stuck in saying, well, we have to do that because, you know, we're being assessed on it. We're being assessed on it because they need to know it.
And if I may, the accountability for the science is going to drive the better instruction. We cannot, I, I really believe strongly that our writing strengths and the work we're doing, beginning in pre-K through, would never have taken off as much as it did without, and we're using empowering writers, without the, the healthy pressure that children have to be able to write well, whether they, you know, at eighth grade, 10th grade, and graduate. The same thing is with science, and I think that's an important point, because I almost make the analogy with science at times with math, that I, I may not be a good math teacher, so I, you know, I'm, it's okay to say I'm not a, I don't know math.
Yep.
And somehow I, I hear, and I say this respectfully, teachers comfortable in saying, well, I just don't know science, you know? I know social... And you can't say that, you know? We have to be able to develop proficient learners in science.
Right.
Because if you look at STEM and technology and everything our children are doing, it's incredibly important.
I think sometimes the disconnect become, comes because at the local level, the, the assessments are being imposed on us from up above, from the state. So I think you just, I think we have to sort of be cognizant of looking one step past that and say, the state is imposing the assessment because the country needs kids who know how to, know science. And it's a need that is, has grown significantly over time.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Sawyer.
I believe the rest of that slide is unchanged.
Yes, just so you recall, the BCBA is a board-certified behavior analyst, that's an additional one at Willett for the number of children who we have on the autistic spectrum. And the rest of it is, is pretty much the same, you're right. So that's a total of now of 18.8 positions. So all the positions that were at the end are now incorporated into here. Great. As we move on, Tom will go over this. I think this has not changed too much, but a little bit.
Correct. Thanks, Dr. Durkin. There are just two lines that change, specifically new staff. At the April 8th presentation, the new staff number was $623,727. What we did was we added in the $471,000 of new positions into that line item, and that's why that line item now shows $1,094,727, or $471,000 more. And therefore, the grand total, instead of being before, the $2,967,489, is now $3,438,489. So the only two changes are, new staff has been bumped up by $471,000, and there naturally is a rippling effect with total increases. All the other entries stay the same.
This merits some discussion, and I'm going to have my colleagues, Mr. Rose and Mr. Sawyer, speak to the APS Wireless Network, of which there are some concerns, because this, we have asked for it, and Tom can possibly start with why we need this and where it should be placed. Remember, we discussed this about the capital planning budget, and I'd like to make sure the committee understands where that, where that positioning is at this point.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Durkin. The primary item that everyone needs to remember, including myself, is when we talk about the upgrade to the infrastructure for our IT, we're really looking at really primarily one item, and that is we need to find a way to increase our bandwidth. Well, one way of increasing our bandwidth is by instill, implementing a wireless network. That was on the, that was on our additional funding priority sheet last time, and that's the only item that the school committee said, leave it as an additional funding priority. We know that you're working with the mayor and the, in the city. We know that it's going to, we're going to try to get included with the capital plan. For now, let's leave it under additional funding priorities. Well, tomorrow morning, there's a meeting at 10 o'clock for all of the individuals who are going to be attending the city council capital planning meeting on Wednesday night at 7 o'clock. I'll be there along with Jason. But our infrastructure IT piece did not get included in the first draft or the first entry for the items that, again, are discussed on Wednesday night. What is included are eight items that we have that are tied directly to buildings, emergency needs, in regard to work at the, for example, work at the Studley School. But this item did not get included. Now, it's part of the plan, if you were to look at this capital improvements program, we'll find it in the book. The only wrinkle is, and it's got listed as a need, we need it for FY14, and it's a priority one. It's not listed as urgent, but it's a priority one, we need it for FY14. Bottom line, it didn't get included with, it's not, now it's not scheduled to be included for Wednesday night's discussion with the city council. So earlier today, I sent an email to the mayor with, naturally with a copy to Dr. Durkin and to Dave Sawyer, and in more words or less, I said, can you please ask or please add this APS Wireless Network to our list of items that are already listed as urgent for Wednesday night's city council meeting? And so we're hoping that this will be one of the items that we'll be able to review with the city council on Wednesday night, and in more words or less, primarily convey one major message. And the major message is this, we are in a serious problem when it comes to bandwidth. We desperately need to increase our bandwidth, particularly in regard to the requirements that we know we're going to need for Park in FY15. And without going into too many specifics, the bottom line is we have to have the capability at all nine schools to have up to 90 students working simultaneously on three different tests all at the same time. And the reality is, if we had to do that tomorrow, we couldn't do it because we simply don't have the bandwidth. That's something that we really need to try to fix next year so that we're good to go with the FY15 testing that we know we're going to get when it comes to Park. So that's a little bit about that APS Wireless Network and the $500,000 request.
Is there any questions about understanding where this is in the budget?
I, I understand where it is in the budget, I just, I, and I think I overheard as we were walking in what the plan is for this, but the administration will be present at the meeting on Wednesday night to articulate... the meeting on Wednesday night to articulate what Mr. Rose just did.
The, the answer to your question, Dave, is yes. Administration will be present. Right now, we have, uh, our game plan is, we have eight items that we know have already been listed for the docket for the city council and they're all building-related, facility-related. And Jason's definitely going to be there for that.
Sure.
We're hoping that this item's also gonna get added to that list and if that item gets added, we'll have appropriate representation.
Okay, and I just, I, I think you know this, but a few of the distinctions that can be made between this item and many of those other items that are listed, that'd be, to be discussed on Wednesday night, the school build, the state school building authority, I expect and I think I know, will compensate the city to a certain degree for many of those costs. I have no reason to think that that will be the case with regard to the technology infrastructure, but it is true that unlike some of the things that the council may be hearing, that a big chunk of the cost is going to be absorbed by the state. And then the others are the variables that you've already identified, that the urgency of this has grown as those variables with regard to assessments have changed. And I think it'll just be clear that the school side articulate that as clearly as possible.
And if I may, I, you know, as much as important as we want roofs that provide our kids protection and heating systems that keep our kids warm, this is a necessity. We can't have our students not having the appropriate bandwidth to be able to access, and it is about access, the amount of knowledge that's available, not only in a daily basis, but also on a pragmatic basis when we do have park. And again, this is a leverage point for accountability. We cannot have our students undermined in front of a computer that simply won't support, you know, and, you know, we can all say that this is an unfunded mandate and park is gonna happen, but every community is dealing with this and we, we can't simply sit, not that I'm saying we here would do that, sit back and say, "Well, it's a state's problem, not ours. It's our children's issue." And I know, as my high school colleagues know well, some of them left already, I mean, when the internet can't support what we have, it's very, very frustrating or it's very, very slow. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Dave? You brought up a great urgency about this, but...
No, it's, it's a serious problem, but we're gonna have to, you know, work to, to resolve it and I think we're well in process on doing it.
Textbooks?
Wait, go ahead, Ken has a question.
So logistically, so 7 o'clock, Wednesday, and whether this is on or not, I still have eight other items and you and Jason are comfortable presenting?
The answer is Jason, to tell you truth, I'll, I'll be in Washington DC on, on Wednesday night, but Jason will be there presenting the issues regarding the eight items that are tied to the buildings, we've already spoken. He'll be there tomorrow at 10 and I'll be there tomorrow as well at 10. And if this item gets on that docket for Wednesday night through the city council, we'll have representation from the administration, they'll explain the reason why we need this, specifically the reason why we need the increased bandwidth. But at this point, that APS Wireless Network, that $500,000, that's not on the agenda for the city council to review. We're trying to get it on between now and Wednesday night.
Okay, so they have questions on Wednesday night? There'll be no one for this?
There'll be answers, yes. There'll be individuals there that'll be able to answer their questions.
Jason and who else?
I have the national honor induction ceremony, but I, I'm sure we're gonna be able to have the right people there.
Absolutely. We'll make sure the appropriate, the appropriate representation is there.
Okay.
Textbooks, are good?
Thank you.
You also?
If I could add on, just one, before we go to textbooks, the point I want to make very quickly is this, and it's just a compliment to the principals. During the budget process, we asked the principals, "Really let us know exactly what you need." And so they gave me various inputs across the schools, "We need this, we need this, we need this, we need this." So when the decision was made two weeks ago, Tom, take that $471,000 and add it into the regular budget, the next step was, "Well, let's just go back to what was submitted and see what's the next second layer of low-hanging fruit." And the decision was made was this, "Let's focus on textbooks, let's focus on athletics." And so we went back in, took a look at the segments that were made and just extracted what was tied directly to textbooks and athletics. Textbooks is fairly straightforward, athletics is also pretty straightforward. I have the backup here if anyone has any questions, but the bottom line is this, the central office is going to take over, as you probably read in the, in the, in the presentation, we're gonna take over the purchase and the delivery of five textbook-type items for the elementary schools for next fiscal year. The numbers that are represented there exclude that. These are numbers, these are, these are tied to textbooks over and above or consumables over and above those five items like Renaissance learning and so on, that we've already identified that we're gonna take care of. So in certain cases, this is the replacement of certain textbooks. If you have any specific questions in regard to what those items are, I'll gladly answer your question, but the long story short is we're looking for approximately $96,000 for textbooks and about $42,000 in athletics to bring athletics and the schools up to date in those two particular areas. Let me stop talking at that point and pass it back to everyone.
Athletics.
Yes.
Contractual services for 12,000, is that for, it's for all nine schools, is, is this what we're looking at?
The answer is yes.
Would be throughout all nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Hold up one moment, the $12,000 is, yes, that, that $12,000 is for the, is for the extra support that we need in regard to the athletic trainer and such. And right now, we have a line item in there for $63,000, we'd like $75,000 and that is part of, it's tied for busing, part of it's tied for athletic training and part of it's tied to the fitness conditioning contract. And I have the, the backup here.
So the 12,000 is for the high school?
Well, the answer...
The contractual services?
$12,000 is for the athletic department and the primary item is yes, it's in support of the high school in regard to busing, athletic trainer and the fitness slash conditioning services, yes.
And what do we have at the high school now? I know we have our trainer.
Yes.
Are we looking for support with, with him? Is that what these contractual services are? What, what is the addition?
The addition primarily is busing, specifically. $6,000 is tied to busing, $1,000 is tied to the athletic trainer contract and $5,000 is tied to fitness and conditioning contract. So the answer is half of it is tied to busing. And the reason it's tied to busing is because unfortunately, we don't have enough vehicles on our own where we feel comfortable, where, yeah, go ahead athletic office, go ahead, we'll, we, we've got the backups that we need, go ahead and use our vehicles so that you can transport this team to point A or point B or point C.
Right.
Down the road, we're gonna fix that. We'll come up with the vehicles that we need so that we can do more of this in, in house. But for now, for the most part, Mark is in a tough, Mark Oul, he's in a tough situation where he's got a contract out and that can get to be expensive and frankly, because of the, the good success of so many of our high school teams, we go into the season further and further, consequently, the demand for bus services increases and so that's part of it.
Right. The 5,000, is that new, the conditioning strength?
Let me read it to you.
Yeah, please.
Fitness slash conditioning contract, adding this will provide our athletes the most up-to-date fitness and conditioning programs available. It will also provide the fitness and weight room with a certified instructor to facilitate the needs of our athletes. I hope that by adding this contracted position, it'll educate our athletes about proper nutrition and warnings of abusing supplements and steroids. So that's what we would like to do if we can get that $5,000.
And would that be throughout the whole school year or is that a certain, whether it's spring, winter, fall?
The answer is this would be across the school year.
Okay, okay.
Safety is one of, safety is one of the biggest aspects of that $5,000 because our, our coaches do a certain amount of coverage of the weight room, but they're not necessarily able to keep up with all the up-to-date training methods and also the nutritional aspect of things and we want to make sure that the athletes that are in there, the students that are in there are as safe as possible.
Go ahead.
Just to add on to that, Mr. Rooney, I mean, this is an additional, a relatively small amount of money under the additional funding priorities on top of the additional money that the school committee voted to ask for last year. So could you just reassure anyone in the committee, I mean, you sort of just did, that these are priorities throughout the year regardless of whether or not this particular funding is ultimately funded? I just want to be clear that, you know, while we didn't have enough for the steroid prevention, so we're just not gonna, you know, do anything with regard to that. I mean, that, that's not happening, nor is any of the other safety issues.
Well, I think that's true. One of the other important aspects is that, you know, I mean, I can say this from the standpoint of my own daughter being an athlete in the high school, people are seeking outside consultants, trainers to, to be able to, to get prepared for their seasons. And, and some of that is understandable because some of it is very skill-specific. But I want kids in this building and it, and this investment would allow us to have a whole new perspective on our, on our fitness facility. It would give parents a comfort level, that they would have somebody who would be skilled, knowledgeable and also someone who is focused on safety, that they would have a comfort level with their child coming here during the summertime or, you know, lifting in the off-season, conditioning in the off-season. We would, we would be greatly appreciative if, if that would be considered.
Yeah, it's just, I think whenever we give a lot of context to some of these priorities, we get into a little bit of a catch-22 because based on the description, it sounds like a basic necessity, based on where it is, it's on slide number 10 of 10, it, it sounds as if it's an extra. And in a lot of ways, it's neither. It's, in, in ideal situations, it's certainly something you want to fund, but those basic responsibilities that Mr. Rose read off are, are being fulfilled and this would allow us to offer an even greater, greater opportunities to the students if, if we were able to do it.
I'm gonna ask about supplies. I'm still on this, this kick. Supplies, that's throughout even for middle schools, elementary, correct? Supplies all through the athletic, because I know middle schools updating some of their, their materials that they use in the gymnasium and things and I know that was one thing that a lot of times that the PTOs try to help with extra things within the school and we just want to make sure that the budgets for the principals have that ability, like you said, they made sure they put it in there, that what is needed for the students, whether it's gym or art or music, that they have the supplies or the, you know, the equipment that they need.
Yes.
So that, I just want to show that $10,000 is throughout the nine and it is hitting some of the middle schools in that funding for new basketballs or anything that they need?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
We'll make sure we, we address those as well as replacement of equipment and things like that, where we know we need at the high school as well.
Right.
But the answer is yes. We're gonna divvy this up across the district.
Right. And the supplies for the 10,000, I know that, is that going to benefit the high school in the lifting, in the workout room? I know that a lot of the, whether it's barbells or the weights and things like that needed to be update in there.
The, the answer is at this point, no.
No.
The primary entries are, we've got new helmet rules for football, we, we need some baseball bats, we also have new regulations and we add uniform restrictions as well, plus we've got aging equipment, supplies in uniform. So within that AG equipment, yes, let's say that part of that AG equipment is tied to the weight room as well.
Okay.
Is that because they're retiring Drucker's number though? Is that part of why the uniform is? If that's the case, I think he's...
Guys are gonna need some more bats.
That's a good point.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, so obviously between now and the end of May, when this, you have the, this period of time and then there'll be discussion, I'm not sure, Tom, you have the timeline of when we have to vote on, on the budget, am I right?
Yes, I sure do.
Is there something else you want to do?
One item.
Yep.
One item I'd like to pass on. First of all, Dr. Durkin, to answer your question, the answer is yes. Ideally, what we would like, what, what we would like would be at the 25th May school committee meeting, for the school committee to vote on the budget for FY14. There's one item I want to pass on and that item is this, it's a spreadsheet and the purpose of the spreadsheet per the chairman, Mike, Chairman Tyler, is just to let everyone on the school committee know that the mayor would like us to drive to a different number. And so earlier today, I hooked up with, with, with the chairman, I said, "Mike, I just want to let you know, these are the numbers that we're driving to, but I want you to know, these are also the numbers I've received from the mayor." And pretty much what the chairman said is, "Tom, I understand there's a difference." In more words or less, I'm not concerned about the fact that there's a difference. We want to try to put forward the budget that we think we need, but this is good information and I'd like to make sure that at the school committee meeting, that that information gets distributed to all the school committee members. So the long story short is I just wanted everyone to know what, at this point, as of the 22nd of April, what's the difference between what we're asking for and what the mayor would like us to drive to? And down the road, the hope is that we're gonna be able to reach an agreement. And that's the purpose of that spreadsheet.
So we're looking at close to what, to, well, 12 million, I'm, I'm sorry, 1,200?
1.2 million.
Yep.
No, you, you're right, Mrs. Chair.
So that would really throw a wrench in what we're, what we're, how we're trying to move forward in the school system. Were there any other conversations with the mayor regarding this is?
These, these were the control numbers and that, that the mayor passed along, based on the latest and greatest numbers that he's receiving from the state. It's not the Bible, but the required net school spending numbers per, for chapter 70, they haven't changed yet. Specifically, the numbers that are on DESE website are still the numbers as of late January and that, that number is $66,560,519. That is the net school spending number that Attleboro has, that Attleboro has to meet for FY14 and I know everyone knows this already, but I need to mention it again, it would be great if we could say, and all that money's gonna come to the Attleboro School Department, but that's not the case. The reality is that this passed for the year ending June 30, 2012, 3.5 million went out to charter schools and also covered other expenses that the city incurred on behalf of education.
And I, I think that speaks to the point that I was gonna make. I do think it's important to note that the mayor is not just picking out arbitrary numbers when, when he presents these.
Right.
I mean, these are...
Not at all.
Based on the challenges that the city faces every year with regard to all of the budgetary priorities and, you know, what needs to be funded. And also, as you said, there is a large chunk of money that our school district is losing because we're competing against entities that in the past, the Attleboro School District did not have to compete against. And it's a, it was, it's been a challenge for the last several years. I know it's one that the administration has taken seriously and has, I think, made progress on, but it's one that we are gonna have to continue to constantly sort of examine our own mindset and understand that we are competing for students with these other schools and in addition to a talent drain, we're, we're losing funding as well. And it's, it's something that, I think it's, I think it's, in some ways, it's a good thing if you believe in competition, which I do, you know, I think, you know, in most aspects, I believe in competition.
I, I do believe in competition.
No, I know, I know.
If I may, if we have the same children. We don't.
And, and that's why I was trying to get those words back in my mouth the second...
You knew you had it going on that one.
You know that's gonna be my...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a mulligan on that last comment and just say...
Go get him, Dr. Durkin.
We constantly, we constantly need to, to look at this as a challenge and one that I think that we can meet increasingly and some of that money will hopefully come back in the door.
Any other questions? Nope, great, thank you, Tom. Alrighty, so now special education compliance. Ms. McCarthy, Director of Special Education and Student Support Services.
Thank you for your time and putting this on the agenda for tonight. What I'm going to do is I won't take more than 10 minutes, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have in regards to compliance. What I'm going to do is walk us through what compliance is and how we monitor it within the district. So essentially what compliance is, is it's making sure that we follow all of the federal and state special education laws. Within Massachusetts, there's 59 different standards of legal compliance for every single special education student. Those standards range drastically, they can deal with assessment, making sure that we're selecting the correct assessments for our students, making sure that we're assessing students within a time, within the timelines provided to us, making sure that we're meeting to talk about the assessments. So in each of the legal standards, there's several areas within each of them. Within each of the standards, there's five different compliance ratings. So we can be commendable all the way down to a standard might not be applicable for our district. If a standard is partially implemented or not implemented, what we need to do as a district... district is create a corrective action plan and implement that plan. Once it's implemented, we're considered compliant. So the state does not come back and look at that. We submitted a corrective action plan, we implemented it, we're now compliant in their eyes. Internally, we have our own monitoring systems that are put into place, and we also have support from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The department has two departments within itself. One is Program Quality Assurance, the PQA, which really focuses on compliance monitoring. That is the place that we can call if we have any technical questions. So what's really nice about PQA is that we have one officer assigned to the district. So if parents call or we call, we get the same advice. And we get that officer's interpretation of the regulations and how to implement it. That's also the agency that parents can contact if they have questions in regards to our compliance and want to file a complaint. That is the district that, the department that will then investigate and tell us whether or not we are compliant. And if we're not, we need to, again, do a corrective action plan, implement that plan, and then we'll be compliant. The Bureau of Special Education Appeals, BSEA, is not used very regularly. This is a depart, part of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we might use a handful of times throughout the year. This is when we're looking for a problem resolution. So the school-based team and the family are not able to agree on what is needed for the student, and they're looking for the department to help offer us some guidance to have a problem resolved. So they could come in and bring a facility, they could help us run a facilitated team meeting, where a facilitator would come to the meeting, make sure the meetings run respectfully, following an agenda, making sure that the meeting stays focused on the students' needs, the facilitator does not make decisions. The medi, a mediation is when a mediator comes out, and the mediator helps guide the team through a process and come to a determination at the end in a mutual agreement that both parties agree to. And then the third option that the Bureau has is going to a hearing, which is always a last resort. That's when we have attorneys involved. It means several days out of the district for the staff, people, a hearing officer hears the case, and then makes a decision based, based upon what they hear and that both sides need to follow. Internally, we have several systems. Our first system is that we have positions within the district. We have three positions that focus on compliance. The first one is my position, the Director of Special Education. Every district has to have an administrator of special education services. That's a regulation that we must follow in order to be compliant. I oversee, this position oversees all of the special education programming for the district. We also have the position of Student Services Coordinator. That position is a position that is a real expert in the regulations and implementing the regulations. That position works at the building level, working with the staff. It also provides trainings on our in-service days and trainings throughout the school year. We, we have a third position of a part-time team chairperson. That's a school-based position where part of the time, the individual is a special education teacher, and then the other part of the time, they are a team chairperson, which means they chair meetings for reevaluations and initial evaluations. They are the go-to person in the building for any questions in regards to procedures. And they too have specialized training in regards to the regulations.
Um, just a quick question.
Sure.
For Student Services Coordinator, how many do we have?
We have four in the district.
Now, is there certain ones that maybe for elementary, middle? Is that how they...
Yep, we have one that covers the whole ELC. So she does all of the train, all of the coordination for the ELC. We have one coordinator that does all of our added district placements and two of our elementary schools. Our third coordinator does six buildings, the three middle schools and three elementary schools. And then our fourth coordinator works at the high school. And that coordinator is a coordinator and also does all of the team chairing and things of that nature at the high school.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next step in the compliance process with internal monitoring is really sitting back and looking at any complaints that come across or any sections of non-compliance. And we need to look at each individual case and decide, is this an isolated case for the specific student? Is it an isolated case for the building? Or is it a district-wide issue? And then we need to do planning accordingly to address the issue. This is a few of the compliance issues that we've done training on this year. We've reviewed, things have come up for one reason or another, and we've identified that we need to do more training in this. So I'll just go over a few MCAS. What we did training on was the MCAS Alternative Exam. That's a highly modified version of the MCAS, and it really should be a very small percentage of students taking the MCAS. It should be for students who are on a track to not receive a high school diploma and continue their education with us until they're 22 years of age. And so, we need to make sure that the students who are taking the MCAS alt were on that track, and that was their transitional goals. We did, in regards to behavior, we did a lot of layers of behavioral training. We did program-specific training for our social-emotional programs, for our autism programs, for our counseling staff. We have ongoing training that we continue to do on writing FBAs, which are functional behavioral assessments, and then implementing behavior intervention plans based upon those assessments. And then transitions, we've been doing two levels of transition training. One level is in regards to our transition planning for students, and that's the actual plan that's attached to their IEP. And so, we just went through a self-assessment process where we assessed ourselves as a district and looked at our areas of strength and our areas that need to, we need to grow on. And we've been accepted into a series of workshops that the state is putting on, that myself and a team from the high school, including Bill Rooney, are going to go to and continue working on our transition planning, which involves programming, it involves making sure we're doing assessments and writing what are called transitional IEPs. Then internally, we've really beefed up our transition training from grade to grade. So we have, the elementary staff did tours of all of the middle schools. So the fourth-grade teachers did tours or are in the process of doing tours, and the team chairs did tours to see what the programs look like at the middle school level. The elementary staff met with the middle school staff, the middle school staff met with the high school staff, specific by areas of expertise. So they were talking specifically about students and the students that are sending from one school to the next, and so that the receiving school were able to hear about those students, and so that we could strengthen our transition process. So those are the types of internal trainings that we're doing based upon compliance.
Marissa, when you talk about EZ IEP, are those the, those are right in the system? Like, do we have a system where they can enter? Is that the...
That's it.
Okay, good, all right. And that's working okay?
That's our online system.
Okay.
Which we wanted to make sure that everybody knew how to use and was using it to its full capabilities. I've recently met with the EZ IEP representatives and have learned even more, about more capabilities that the program has for free that we'll be able to use. And so, yes, that's our online system, and we did a training to make sure everybody knows how to use the system and is using it to the best of its abilities.
I think that's when we brought in Aspen, right? Superintendent Durkin, that was one of the things for the EZ IEP to get it. Okay, good. So it is up and running and...
Mm-hmm.
Because that makes it a lot easier for them. Okay, good.
Yep. And so, staff can access that at any, even at home.
Oh, good.
So, perfect. The third level of compliance monitoring we have within the district is our procedural manual. This is a book that's actually in all of the schools. There's a minimum of two copies in all of the schools. It's a step-by-step on how to implement the regulations and how to provide the services to the students. So this is just a few of the things that are covered in the procedural manual. And when I talk about something like placement, that is talking about how a child can move. We always want to make sure that they're in the least restrictive environment possible, and that we're trying all the interventions in the general ed setting before moving a student. So there's step-by-step directions into, in the procedural manual, how to change a student's placement, if that's something we're going to be thinking about. The manual, I'm also in the process, I'm working with the coordinators and trying to update it. We're looking at it section by section and getting it into a document that will be able to be uploaded onto our webpage so that staff will be able to access it easily, easily, and parents will be able to access it. And then, it's really timely to be talking about compliance because we have our monitoring coming up from the Department of Ed. They come out every three years. They're coming out in two weeks to do a mid-cycle review on our department. They will be here for two full days. They'll be sending us a team from the Department of Ed, Program Quality Assurance. They'll be looking at 21 files, and in those 21 files, they'll be focused on the 14 areas that they identified that we needed to correct last time. But that does not mean they will not be looking at all of the other standards. So, once that's done, they will give me a brief exiting report, but then they will give us a thorough report as a district that you'll receive a copy of.
And it, it may be worthwhile to have a presentation on that report of what it looks like so the public and the committee understands where we are with compliance. I, I just want to underscore, I know a thousand students, 59 areas for every student, that's, what's the math? 590,000?
59,000.
59,000, sorry, I'm trying to do my math. 59, I mean, I used to, I can be very candid, and I have huge respect for the DESE, but I used to have what I'd consider my yearly fight with them, because I had 14,000 children with IEPs in Boston. And if there were three IEPs, there was a citation, "IEPs are not being met," for whatever reasons. They'd never say it was three, but, you know, and it was literally, what you aim for is looking at trends and making sure we're trying to do the right thing, and looking at substantial compliance issues. Children waiting for services is absolutely something none of us want. Children waiting for an evaluation. So those timelines are critically important, and I'm not trying to weigh one compliance area and the other, but it is important to understand that what is substantial and what are the chances of being 100% compliant. We in Attleboro have had very few complaints, and when we are incorrect, we're incorrect. But I think the analysis that Marissa does is very important. Is this a staff member of which, you know, who made an error and was doing the progress reports incorrectly, or who did not communicate with families well enough that they were part of that IEP process? Or is this a school-wide issue where everyone seems to have a different take on how this should be done and therefore has to be corrected? Or is it a district-wide trend where we need to put some systems in place to make sure that what we're doing is not the wrong thing in terms of what IEPs and what service delivery looks like? So those three levels have to take into account, but it, it is very challenging, and yet we aspire to 100% compliance. But I think this helped understand the magnitude of what compliance is and what it isn't, and what are substantial issues. And in addition, I don't want to lose the qualitative issues. When, when Ms. McCarthy sits with AICPAC, there is a lot of anecdotal information that's exchanged to talk about, you know, we're not feeling comfortable at IEP meetings, or they seem very rushed, or, you know, we didn't have enough understanding of what the speech and language evaluation went. I'm, I'm giving some examples. And that helps Ms. McCarthy sit with providers to say, wait a minute, we're not doing our due diligence, even though we're getting into compliance, but what's the quality of that meeting that's taking place about that child who should be the most important thing for you and for that parent? So there's a lot of, I think, internal controls that we're trying to aspire to, to get, give better customer service, and working at that all the time with a lot of different ways of getting that information.
Absolutely. And the staff...
I'm sorry, Bill just had a question. Hold on one second.
With the monitoring that's coming up in May, you said that they'll be reviewing anything that got brought up at the last, I'm going to call it an audit for the lack of a better term, because that word means more to me, but is it also fair to say that they'll review all the corrective actions that your team has put in place since their last...
Yes, absolutely.
Since their last visit? So that people that have had corrective actions put in place on behalf of their students, this will be that outside review to make sure that it's still being in place?
Absolutely.
So I mean, I guess, I think the general public needs to know that, you know, even though that we're going to monitor ourselves, it is still being reviewed by an outside entity every three years so that what was put in place is still being, continued to be doing. So I think that's, it's important for us to know that, it's important for you to know that, it's important for the general public to know that, so.
And, and the DESE, when they come in, they may say they're looking at five, six areas. It's sort of like a tax audit. Everything is fair game.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, you know, so it's not like they're saying, we're only looking at this. It's, they will look at many areas, and that's what our job is to explain those.
And, and another thing that the department has said is that they will contact the school and come out if they start to get, see trends, and that we're getting, they're getting a lot of telephone calls in regards to one area. And so, for example, if all IP services weren't being implemented, and they continue to see that they were getting a lot of calls around, around that, they would then come out, and that would trigger them to contact us and see what's happening. But we're not in that state right now, which is a good thing. But compliance is something we continue to work on regularly, and with so many different standards, it is something that evolves, and we have to keep training and making sure that we're always student-focused.
And, and I also think it's important, not to make the baseball analogy, but it is first base. If you're not compliant with the state and federal regulations, no matter what services and programs you have, it is, it is secondary. You must be compliant with timelines and what the law states. So that's an important note, that that's the most important thing we have to do. And then, of course, comes the qual, all the other things. But compliance is a key piece of every single special education child's life, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nope. Okay, moving on to personnel. Thank you. Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you. I have four items on the personnel report this evening. The first is the retirement of Jane Duffy, literacy coach at Brennan. The second is a resignation, the resignation of Susan Osmento, principal at Hill Roberts Elementary School. I also have two appointments. The first is J.B. Delory, paraprofessional at Wamsetta. The second is Heather Fallen, paraprofessional for the Insights Program at Willa.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Committee reports. Finance facilities recruitment subcommittee chairman, Mr. Perrin.
We've got a couple of warrants to do. First one dated April 10, 2013, amount of $239,089, which appropriations make up $213,002.13, special funds $803,090. I don't think warrants of $13,025.3, and revolving funds of $11,608.4. Second one dated April 17, 2013, amount of $324,392.99, which appropriations make up $268,808.55, special funds $300. I don't think grants of $7,197.32, and revolving funds of $48,086.92. Our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 15, at 7:00 p.m. And that, Mrs. Chair, is our business.
Great, thank you. Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee Chairman, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. The next meeting of the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee will be held on the 7th of May, 6:30. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Policy Subcommittee, nothing to bring forward at this time. The next meeting will be held on May 13, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. in this room. And do I have a motion?
Motion, Jim.
All in favor?
Second.
Oh, sorry, second. Mr. O'Neill, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye, thank you.